All right, 7:02 PM. Call the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Jay, you want to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, for tonight's meeting we have President Sarah Hugo, Dolores Clouder, Paul Bush, do not hit, no Jay Johnson, okay, Vince Banderski, Jay Hoffman, Mike Yancho, and myself, Larry Anderson. Can that work better? We go, try to speak into that more. Okay. Absent are, then we have to list who's absent on there. Put that in there, Vince. Let's look at the minutes for our prior meeting. We'll need to approve those tonight. You have a copy of that? Any questions or anything on the minutes?
Approve the head orders, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. January 6th agenda for tonight. Approve the agendas presented. Anybody have any comments? Want to make that motion?
Make the motion to approve it, Alexander.
Made the motion, seconded by Vince Banderski.
I just want to check if there are any additions or deletions to it.
Nope. All right. Now we'll go into approval of minutes. Sorry about skipping that first part.
All in favor?
I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Sorry, I'll get to you guys. Okay. For the minutes from the November 4th meeting, any changes or any questions on that?
Mr. Chairman, unless any commission member has an objection, I make, I have read the draft minutes and find everything in order and make a recommendation that we approve the minutes as stated.
Support.
Okay. Supported by Mr. Bush. In favor? And at this point in time, we'll open the floor for public comment. Anybody here for public comment tonight on any issue for the commission? No issues? Okay. Seeing none for public comment, we'll close public comment. Correspondence. I received in my packet the newsletters and so forth, zoning news presented.
Schedule for the meetings.
And the new schedule, I received that, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Very good, okay. Correspondents. Item six, old business. Have any old business to discuss, Jeremy, or anything that the board wants to bring up? Old business, item six.
The old business is the, we're continuing on with the flexible one and flexible two discussion.
We're going to have Jill start that presentation for us. You'd like to do that, okay? Jill, ma'am, whenever you're ready.
Oh, yeah. I didn't realize that we were doing that.
I'm moving, I want to.
Oh, man, I'm sorry. I was just.
I want to beat Vince's record.
Reading your agenda and, okay. So, happy New Year, everyone. Hope everybody had a nice break. We have, as part of our discussion that we'd had back in early December, I think it was, we talked about creating two new zoning districts for the flexible development land use designation that we have, that we've had in the master plan for several years and continued that again with the current update. And we talked about certain areas that might be well suited for that. And the big driving force behind that idea of flexible development was to provide flexibility with some of the properties that we've identified as maybe being challenged in their size, their location, their topography. And so having this flexible development category would allow applicants the opportunity to have some uses largely commercial, although a mix of residential and the regular flex district, and then a little bit of maybe industrial type uses in the flex two, with a little bit of additional consideration for adjacent uses, which in most cases tend to be residential. So with that in mind, we took a look at the categories and the uses that are permitted currently in the general commercial district. Kind of going through this, I think you may have, there may be questions that you have about those uses and what they are or why they're listed the way they are, but that is from the current ordinance and it also might be another cleanup item that we want to tackle later in the year. But by and large, the commercial, general commercial uses were put into flexible development, one with the addition of multiple family dwellings, and then some lot sizes going along with that. And the same with flex two, removing some of the more intense, heavier auto-oriented uses like bus passenger stations and gasoline stations, and that may be something that we want to discuss. So, having said that, also included a use matrix for comparison, which is another item that I think we might want to clean up a little bit, and then the maps where those districts would end up roughly based on the future land use map that included in the packet as well. I don't know if we want to just start at the beginning with flexible development one, but kind of taking a look at, you'd seen the intent previously, we sent that last time in December, taking a look at those uses. Does that make sense to create this flex district one using those land uses from general commercial? Are there anything, is there anything listed that shouldn't be there in these areas given their locations, or are there things that we should add that we struck out? I guess we could start with that.
Anybody else have any comments to start with?
Can I start?
Yep, please.
The only thing that, going through this, and Jill and I already talked about this a little bit, was that maybe we want to consider in both of them, gas stations and maybe just the smaller six pumps. I mean, they're in commercial already. I know we've got a plethora of gas stations, but they are already allowed in commercial, so I mean, just both of these sections already have gas stations in them, so just food for thought.
Okay.
Can I just make a comment on that?
Yeah.
I think gas stations have probably been one of the most controversial, you know, developments that we have. That's the one that really turn out, you know, the neighboring parcels around the proposed gas station. So I would be, and like you say, I think there's enough gas stations in Grand Island Township already, and that issue comes up anytime we have a gas station proposal. Just a comment from what I've seen in the past. So I would, I don't know, I tend not to want to include gas stations, just.
I was going to bring that up as my second question, actually, because I'm kind of thinking, I want to leave the gas stations open to the, go to the township board for review and have them have the final saying that. They are very controversial.
Yeah.
And looking at the areas where, on the map where this one's going to apply, I'd kind of like to keep that in the hands of the township board. Whether anybody else agrees with me on that or not, but that's my opinion on that. And I was looking for some clarity. It's listed in here. Essential service storage yards. What exactly would that entail? What would the definition of that be? Page four.
Oh, well, essential services would be things related to public utilities, governmental buildings. Often in our ordinance, you'll see essential services but not storage yards, and so this is when you can have service yards with an essential service. So it might be for fleet vehicles, right? Consumers.
Okay.
Utilities like that.
Presently, I'm thinking of one just over here off Door Highway where consumers is, or at least was, renting or leasing property to store vehicles for their pipeline, I believe their pipeline repairs. Would that be the type of thing, like a temporary use to lease a vacant land for that? Somebody would propose a business that would, you know, it'd be municipal. Can we maybe phrase that better so as, I'm saying, I don't want, I don't want some local lawn and garden shop to lease that property and store equipment there outdoors for years. Because I'm kind of, I feel that's a little bit open and vague.
What is the definition in the zoning ordinance? It said, I don't have it in front of me, but it's section 4.30. That would, might give some help in understanding what we mean by essential service storage yards.
Don't have it.
No, no. But you've got the site there, so.
Mr. Bush has his, let's see.
I'll look it up.
Oh.
I'm.
We're going to look at the definition.
Yeah, I'm looking for it here. Accessory outdoor display, which outdoor storage for 4.7.
Okay. Okay.
Seen it.
Yeah, I know this thing is not the easiest thing to. Oh, no, you're up to 4.0.
Three.
Yeah.
CD. Four special site design.
Oh, no, it's 4.30.
Okay, 4.30.
Oh, unless.
We're still looking.
Jeremy probably.
Yeah. We can keep going, I'm sorry.
Essential services is the, and you'll find this if you're looking in the definition section on page 2-15, I believe. It's in chapter two. Erection, construction, alteration, or maintenance by public utilities as defined herein of underground, surface, or overhead gas, electrical, steam, fuel, water transmission, or distribution system, collection, communication, supply, or disposal system, including towers, poles, wires, mains, drains, sewers, pipes, conduits, cables, fire alarm, and police call boxes, traffic signals, hydrants, and similar equipment in connection therewith but not including, this is not written by a planner, I'll tell you that. Not including buildings which are necessary for furnishing of adequate service by such utilities or municipal departments for the general health, safety, or welfare. Essential services shall not include storage yards, cellular telephone towers, commercial reception towers, air quality monitoring stations, school bus parking yards, sales or business office, or commercial buildings or activities. Unless they're, unless they are allowed, which in that case, they're specifically listed after that.
Listed after that, so, okay, that kind of clears up my question somewhat then. Just wanted to make sure we had a little bit of understanding of what it was and.
Yeah, okay.
What I wanted, what I didn't want there, okay. So I'm good with that one, and like I said, Dolores, my second comment would be, I would like to leave the gas stations up to the township board. I don't want to include that in here at all. Any other comments, Mr. Yancho?
Remind me again what our latitude is when it comes to special land use, and do we have to be consistent from one parcel to another with the same zoning, or what can we do to control the appearance or, and allowances that people are, developers are able to do within a particular zoning?
That's a really good question. So special land uses are those uses that we think are generally okay in the districts in which they're listed, but because of where they are on individual properties that are zoned that way, there may be special considerations and special conditions that we need to apply to those to make sure that they don't negatively impact the neighboring uses.
So for, for instance, if, if one, we could allow a gas station in one flexible development area but not in another, in the, of the same zone?
I think it would be better if you had, if you identified that as a standard. So if, for example, you'd say, gas stations may be permitted as long as they're more than 200 feet from a residential district. That might help us identify where they should go and where they shouldn't go. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Rather than saying, having someone come before you requesting that, and then you say, "Well, we don't think that's appropriate here." You can, but it's better if you have standards that everybody understands upfront.
Standards could be developed later.
Besides now?
Yes.
Today? Yes. Yeah, if you said, "I want to see some standards for that," then I would ask you, "What are you concerned about?" And then we would work on those standards to try to mitigate what your concerns are.
Through the chair. So my, my idea would be not to allow them, just because this is getting messy, on the idea that as the public typically doesn't like to see the gas stations everywhere or around them and things of that nature, and then this whole development is supposed to be how things are working together. And it's going to be a hard thing to get something like that working together with everything else, and we're going to have to have if this, then that, then this, and different standards. I think your, your rules are going to get so long in that idea, and it's not like we don't have areas for gas stations to go to now that are working well with the community as it is. So I would, my personal belief would be to scratch it from not being allowed in here. It's just too complicated.
Okay. All right. Anything further you want to, want to, should we continue with the presentation?
I think I hear what you're saying on the gas station.
Okay.
Like a partial maybe, but it's pretty clear that that's not really.
Okay.
So what other, what other things? I think we look, well, automobile sales, that was another one. Because I know that used auto sales has come up in the past as being something that's not been super desirable. There is a distinction between new and used based on, you know, whether they're, if they're new and used, they tend to be in the newer category, whereas if they're just used, like a used car lot, they tend to be a little bit less organized and professional looking, I think, as we've seen over time. So that's why I took that one out. Also, commercial kennels, thinking about the noise for that unless they were completely indoor, so that was something to, to consider.
Actually, indoors, kind of, I don't own pets like that, but indoors kind of seems to be a growing trend now, indoor kennel breeding, or even the animal daycare facilities. And I've never seen one, there's a couple in Fenton that are not well-kept, so I don't know if we'd have a problem with allowing that in this type of district or not. Be close to, my thought would be close to where residents would be working, or close to traffic areas that they'd be going to or from work. I don't know. Any thoughts on that?
I would just, I've never seen one that's completely indoors, that they don't have an outside to at least go to the bathroom.
Run.
Yeah, I've never seen one that's 100% indoors.
Okay.
Never heard of such a thing. You would think just for bathroom's sake that they, it couldn't be feasible to operate that way.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
There's one on Fenton that claims to be.
I mean, in my house, we have to have an outside.
Okay.
Just, are there such things that are completely indoors?
There are.
Yeah, interesting.
Yeah.
Guess it works well in New York City.
There you go, yeah. I hear you make big money there walking dogs.
Right. This is that people just don't have space to do the runs, and so manage that inside.
Everything else on there looked good to me, anyway, from the list. I didn't see anything else that was, I was definitely against the gas stations, and thank you for the clarity on the storage.
Mr. Chairman, I've got one other suggestion.
Okay.
In flex two, storage facilities for building materials or storage yards. Only in flex two, not in flex one. Just because that's going to be close to the light industrial section of the township on Door Highway already.
Okay.
That's the only reason why.
Allow it in flex two, but scratch that out of flex one?
Yes, flex one, not.
It's not in there, is it?
Not in there in flex one, but in flex two, I'd like to have that added potentially.
Outdoor storage.
Outdoor storage.
Outdoor accessory storage, outdoor, either storage, just the outdoor storage, like storage for outdoor materials, or outdoor storage associated with, like as an accessory to.
Right. Let's say you have a small landscaping company, and you want to have their, all their bigger equipment. They couldn't build a big enough building to store it outside, as long as it was fenced and couldn't be seen.
And we have this, the screening standards, too.
Yep.
Would that include potentially, I see the Door Highway.
Oh, yeah, accessory use and stor, oh, light industrial uses without, without outdoor storage. So we would say with outdoor storage.
Would that.
Where is, where is outdoor storage on the list? It's not.
It's not, but the very influx two, if you look at the very.
Number eight, or page eight, excuse me.
The last one.
Okay. Roman numeral.
The, second from the bottom.
Eight.
On.
Twenty-eight?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, yeah, okay. Oh, light industrial, oh, without outdoor storage.
All right.
It's been a long day.
Looks not that long, okay. Okay, I see where it, where it's at on there under two.
Outdoor uses with outdoor storage, I'd like to have that.
With.
Oh, you want to cross out without?
Or should we have it be?
Cross out, out.
An outdoor store, or outdoor store, we'll write it in a way that's not just an outdoor storage yard, but, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that would be my concern. That's, is that a definition that's already in our zoning ordinance, or?
We have storage, storage yards and things of that sort already built in.
If I can help you, yeah, you mentioned earlier without outdoor storage, that it's screened, so there is, there is.
Provisions.
Provisions in there to say, "You can have it, but you have to be screened."
Right. It's under, this is under special land uses anyway, so wouldn't be something that would just be permitted.
I'm good with that.
You're good with that, okay. But that would also include on there along Door Highway, would include that area along, would that include the area along 75 and Holly Road area down there, too, in the south?
Well, the flexible two is just right there.
Just Door Highway.
Just Door Highway only, okay.
It's that one circle.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be okay with that as well, again, providing there's adequate barriers and setbacks and so forth, which I think we could easily do, so. I'd be okay with that, not in zone one but two only.
Yes.
No further comment, then we will leave that up to the developer, Jill, and to update that for us, make a final presentation, and then it'll go to the board, correct?
Well, we have some public hearing, so I don't know if you want to have Jill, I don't know if Jill has, can be able to spin it around for the next February meeting. Do you want to set the public hearing for February, or do we want to have a month in between and set it for March?
I was going to say, unless there's some business beaten on our door, March is fine with me. And I don't think there is anybody that's really looking for this change right now.
You ain't have it for next month?
Right.
I've actually got somebody that's.
You do have somebody that's interested.
We tabled one that was looking to use flex two.
Do it as quick as possible.
Okay, well, that was my question, if that is, then I want to.
Yeah, we have somebody in the wings that's trying to do flex two in, started in February.
Okay, I would like to do it then in February, as long as that gives you ample time to.
I don't think the changes are that significant that we can't do it.
All right.
We got that, no gas stations and that change of flex two.
February.
Calendar.
Third.
February 3rd meeting? Okay. Schedule the public hearing then for that on the February 3rd meeting, and public notice to schedule everything out in time, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Make a motion.
Yeah.
Can I make a motion to put that on the February 3rd?
Support.
Motion, support by Vince, or you have a question?
I'll support, but I have a question.
Okay.
Are we going to talk at all about the development standards?
Okay.
Because, you know, the first question I have is, or talks about the green roofs and green walls. Do we have any, any facilities that have green roofs today in the township?
I don't think so.
I know there's a couple that have green walls, Holly and McCandless Road, but, and then the second question I have is, under landscaping, D1 or DIC, where it talks about evergreen trees shall be planted in two rows. Are those rows offset? Or?
Good question, because that's how I interpreted it. I guess that's the way my mind went for it, is it?
But, but if, if they're to be offset, where you end up with a wall, we ought to state that it's offset, because right now it just says two rows.
That could be. Yep, good. Mr. Yancho first, then, Mr. Trump.
Offset is a perspective. You can look at offset straight on from 90 degrees, and they can be offset, but if you move to 45 degrees, those trees are no longer offset. So if you want to specify that, you need, I believe you'd want to specify from the viewing direction that you want them to appear offset.
Mr. Chair, back to Mr. Yancho. Well, how do we state that so we get the intent where we have, when the trees are grown, you know, you have a screen and not just holes in there where, because the trees line up?
I didn't formulate any language, I just wanted to point out that that does occur when you, when you do offset of two rows of trees, that if you move.
Yeah, if you're looking at it, 90 degrees from the road versus coming down the road.
Exactly.
Mr. Hoffman, you had a comment, or?
Well, aren't, typically, that's only, that happens more when they're first planted, and then as they grow in, they, those gaps fill in, whether, whatever angle you work at, anyway, is what I've seen.
Mr. Bush?
If we say something like, evergreen trees shall be planted in two rows, planted in two rows, so as to provide a complete screen upon maturity?
Well, they're going to be, upon maturity, they're going to be screening anyhow, but along the way, the first 20 years, they may not.
Okay, to provide a complete screen in five years? Will you know what that, I mean, you'll know what that is, but.
Why he's pondering that, I'm going to get Paul going.
Well, thank you, Larry. My only comment's going to be, we have these requirements in this section, so we have a number of trees, trees that are required. Do we want to tell them where to put them? And it, I'm suggesting we don't tell them where to put them, because every single site comes to us to site plan review, and it's reviewed at a site plan committee. At that point, and I was on it years and years ago, we move trees around all the time in site plan. So we really want to go down the route to tell people where to plant trees at this level? We already have a mechanism to do that at site plan.
And we should also have, if you go down to number four, it says the planning commission can allow variation in placement and spacing of the required trees. So I think, and that was one of the ideas here, is that we gave them some, some guidelines, some way to get started, because you've got, these standards are sort of the light version of what we have in Tech Village, but we also do have those Birmingham screen wall standards in section 5.10.
Okay.
So combining that, but then really giving you the flexibility to work with an applicant to make sure that the screening is sufficient and not going to interfere with some of the other things that they may need to, to manage, like if, like we were saying earlier, like the topography or the way that the property is arranged.
And I agree with Paul that every lot's going to be a little bit different, and there may be some variations, but I would like to have it in here and then let the zoning board so look at each individual and allow changes.
Right, and this allows a planning commission to make those waivers and changes and not send someone to the zoning board of appeals, because they're not going to, they're going to look at the, well, it's a hardship, and that's not really what we're trying to accomplish. We want the screening.
Right.
And you can provide that flexibility.
Okay. Mr. Banderski?
Back to Jill if I can. In section four there, if you just added the word screening, I think that would, you know, because you talk about.
Two rows screening.
And the like, and, you know, and the like, well, you could imply that that's screening, but I think if we put the word screening in there, that would help clarify that, and that would satisfy my concern.
Exactly.
Evergreen trees shall be planted in two rows, that one?
No, the one on four, down below, the planning commission may allow.
Okay.
Okay. With those changes made, are you okay with your motion, Jay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so the motion stands with changes noted. Vince, you still support? Support?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No? Okay. So, forward to that one next meeting, thank you. New business, zoning case 669, rezoning, public hearing for vacant land, 1204-318, from single-family residential to general commercial. Presentation on that one, Jeremy?
Yep. I don't think we're, I got a call from our representative, and they were coming from Grand Rapids, so.
Ooh.
They had a, they were sucking traffic, so I don't think they're going to make it tonight, so bear with me, I'll just. Bear with me, I'll just give my presentation, and then I can answer any questions, yeah. This is zoning case 669, vacant land on Saginaw Street, ROC Wash Holdings LLC, parcel number 12-04300-018. The property in question is located on Saginaw Street, just south of the point, next to the Midas Shop. The proposed parcel rezoning is approximately 0.98 acres. It's the applicant's intent to rezone the back half of the parcel from R3, single-family residential, to GC, general commercial. The front half of the parcel is already zoned general commercial, and the purpose for the change is for future development. The surrounding zoning is R3 to the north, GC to the east, south is GC, and west is GC. No site plans have been seen. Well, that's incorrect, as of when this was done, we didn't have site plans, but as of today, we do have site plans, and we will be staying there in the next month if this rezoning is put through. So for the criteria for the rezoning, consistency with the goals and policies of future land use map. The PC and township board adopted the 2021 master plan and future land use map in September 21. This request is consistent with the newly adopted master plan and zoning map. Adibility with the site's physical, geological, hydrological, and environmental features, the series we found, if we can propose to evolve it, and the physical condition of the site. Evidence that the applicant cannot receive a reasonable return on investment, incumbent on the applicant to provide this information. The availability of all potential uses allowed in the proposed zoning district. You have, in your packet, you have all of the list of permitted uses in the general commercial district. The capacity and talent of utilities and services are sufficient to accommodate the uses permitted. There appears to be adequate services and utilities to serve the proposed use. Capability of the street system to safely and effectively accommodate the expected traffic. Property front south Saginaw Street, which is an all-season five-lane road, five-lane road with a center turn lane. The apparent demand for the types of use is permitted. Applicant intends to develop the property with the use that is permitted, or is a special land use for the GC district. Boundaries of the requested rezoning district are reasonable in relationship to surrounding and other than site. The rezoning of this parcel ensures that the whole parcel is zoned GC. As you can see in your maps, the, the back with L, and the front of the parcel is already GC, there just is none of these strip in the back, from R3 to GC.
Presently, two parcels we're going to be making into one?
It's going to be three parcels taken into.
Taken into one, okay.
The rezoning is appropriate, the newly adopted future land use map indicates GC is an appropriate use in this area. This is a request for specific use, the rezoning is not for specific use, this parcel will be allowed, this parcel will allow permitted and special land uses for the GC district. Request of rezoning will not create an isolated and unplanned spot zone. This rezoning does not create a spot zone due to the future land use map. And there has not been a request to rezone within the last year. There's been no additions, and no other factors that deem appropriate. So the planning and zoning department would support a approval based on the following reasons, the requested zoning is compatible with the surrounding land uses, and two of the future land use map recommends for GC at this location. The planning commissioner's motion should be in the form of a recommendation to the township board.
Any discussion, commission on this?
I guess I'll start. So the special land use map was changed end of the year last year, correct?
Yeah, September.
Were the, were the surrounding residents notified of that impending change? Like, for example, if an applicant comes now and wants to change something on their part, you notify the surrounding applicants and say, hey, look, here's what's coming up. When the township changes the special, the future land use map, do we do that same thing?
We put it in the paper, we can't send it to every individual in town.
This was sent.
This one was sent to 300 feet within the surrounding.
For this purpose, not last, not the end of the year?
The whole entire map, no, it was sent, it was put in the paper, it was put online, it was put in as many places as we could that would reach as many people as this.
And I, I mean, I actually knew that part, I just wanted to get it out there, that, especially when the special land use map is changing, it, it gives an easier route for those who come and say they want to change it. And really, the population should know that, and, and take heed to when they're, when we're changing the special, I mean, the future land use map, because we're giving an easier route to somebody to come and change it later. So, so I just want to make sure of, I actually wanted to get it out there about those. The, the second thing is, did we hear anything from the residents at the first time, as far as when we changed the future land use map, or this time? Have we heard any correspondence?
Here for the first one, when, oh, you weren't.
I wasn't either.
That was.
There's nothing on file from the residents that are questioning this?
This in particular one? Oh, I thought you were talking about the.
Yeah, no, he's talking about just this particular, this particular.
This particular parcel.
No, we had one phone call, and they were, they thought it was the McCannish one.
Oh, okay.
They talked about months and months ago, so, no, we have no correspondence subjecting
Fair enough, thank you.
And I, I noticed there is one resident area, but it's kind of set way back, and there's a good natural variety of trees and stuff there, so I wasn't too concerned for. I am somewhat familiar with these lots, and driving by them on the way here, they've been sitting empty for a year, so this might actually spark some development there, which would be.
And it's semantics, it really should have, that line should have been pushed back to that back line anyways. Years ago, but we're just trying to clean it up, because the whole parcel needs to be GC for the years.
Sure.
But what is it for, on the future land use map, that we, our current future land use map, what is it? Show. I mean, is it general commercial, or is it? Oh, no, I guess it wouldn't be general.
General commercial.
But I mean, as far as the future land use.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's currently.
I think this is future, this is the current future map.
This is the current map. I don't, I don't have a problem with the, you know, the rezoning, it makes a lot of sense to, you know, change that to general commercial, given the surrounding area, and the fact that that.
The yellow area behind this, I'm, parcel site 50, 649, it's not going to change.
Yeah.
Which that appears to be.
And like I said, this is just semantics, if, if this was a residential lot that was in, you know, and they wanted to do this all commercial, what are we talking about?
Right.
This is just moving that line back to front of the property, and the other two parcels that they're going to be purchasing are already commercial, so it's just cleaning up and continuing that zoning that they need to.
Okay.
Makes it more consistent.
It makes sense, I mean, I.
As long as nobody's complaining, too.
Yeah.
Right, right, yeah.
The only comment that I'd make is, is, you know, that, that lot's been vacant for a long, long time. And I think one of the reasons probably is because it's so small. And by doing this, I think we, we're going to allow a lot more.
Right.
Interest, and a lot more ability for maybe a little bit of larger facility, and maybe that's why no one's been there in the past.
Yeah, because you wouldn't have enough parking lot to accommodate, or even a square foot.
It's just really small.
I, I agree, I think the layout of it makes sense. Okay, any further discussion?
Chairman, if there are no other comments, I would make a motion that we approve the zoning number 669, and make a recommendation to the township board for approval.
Support. Okay, supported by Mr. Hoffman. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no one opposed? Okay. Motion stands and approved. Any committee reports? Jeremy? No, I have the report there, okay. Sarah, do you have anything from the township board?
No, I don't.
You don't? Okay. Very good.
There were no site plan reviews that, since our last meeting. Unless there are any other comments, I would make a motion that we adjourn the meeting at 7:40. Support?
Aye. Aye. Meeting adjourned.